Good evening and welcome to the New Windsor Town Council Candidates Forum. Held virtually and broadcast live on 11. Also being streamed live on Facebook, YouTube, and the Community Media Center website at carolmediacenter.org. Because this meeting is being held via Zoom, our live coverage is subject to Internet streaming capacity and may experience technical difficulties beyond our control. The forum will be recorded and rebroadcast on cable channel HD 1086, Channel 19, and posted online for on-demand viewing. The Community Media Center has partnered with the Carroll County Times to provide this program as a public service to the community. The Community Media Center does not endorse any political candidate or political organization. I will now turn the program over to our moderator for the evening, Mr. Bob Blueball, editor of the Carroll County Times.
Thank you, Teresa. As moderator for this evening, I'll introduce each of the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. Following the forum introductions, I'll ask the first question, and each candidate will again have two minutes to answer each question. All candidates will answer the identical questions. There will be no debate. This is an informational forum. At the conclusion of the question period, before the end of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes for a summary statement. All responses will be timed, and the moderator, myself, will stop the candidate when the two-minute time limit has elapsed. The questions posed to tonight's candidates are a mixture of prepared questions and questions from the community submitted in advance to the Carroll County Times. So let us begin with an opening statement from Kevin Ronald Cornick.
Good evening, fellow citizens of New Windsor. I'd like to first thank the, our moderator, Bob Blueball. I'd also like to thank the Carroll Media Center for hosting this. And I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates for joining tonight and actually putting forth their participation in the process to elect two new town council members for the city of, or town of New Windsor. Their involvement, as well as mine, is a big part in what is needed in our community. We need to step up and get involved. A lot of times we stand on the sidelines, and this is an opportunity to get in and be involved. I'll just start by saying, my name is Kevin Cornick, obviously. My wife and I have lived in New Windsor for over 25 years. Four years we lived outside of the town, but walking distance from the town line, and now we live within the town, and we've lived in the Blue Ridge Manor area for what seems to be hard to believe by both, for both of us, 21 years. But we've had the distinct pleasure of getting to know the really good people and honest people of New Windsor, and we've enjoyed learning the history of the town and getting to know the leaders of the town. More important than just getting to know the residents of the town, we've enjoyed participating alongside the fellow citizens who work hard to put on the functions of the town, to perform the town government essential responsibilities, and, you know, the things that fund the organizations in the town. During my 25 years in the community, I've been able to participate in community activities. For the last 15 years, I've been a coach for the Rec Council. Many of you may know me as Coach Kevin. Coordinator Kevin, you probably know my wife as well for organizing different sporting events and schedules for, for, for the community. I feel that I'm familiar to the community, and I'll be a familiar face in the future.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, next we'll hear from Austin T. Fogarty.
Hey, good evening, New Windsor residents. My name is Austin Fogarty. As you know, I'm running for town council here in New Windsor. I guess my whole goal tonight would be to hopefully leave you all with a purpose or reason to vote for particular candidates, hopefully myself, to work on a team with other council members and the mayor to, um, solve issues or problems or needs that might arise within the town coming up in the future. I'm very good at working with a team, and I think I'm going to bring a common sense, logical issues that town faces to include financial issues and appropriate allocations of funds that we might have. I'm just, I'm here because I want the best for our town, which also means I want the best for you guys, because I'm a resident here myself and my neighbors. I did move here in 2013. I love this place. My wife and my children love growing up here. Right now, we're going to raise our family here, so it's really kind of near and dear to my heart. So I just want to have the ability to formulate, hopefully, a team of good, qualified individuals to lead in a way that would be beneficial for everyone involved, to include ourselves, because we're invested emotionally and, and financially and physically and personally. So each one of us, especially myself, has an investment in this town, and it's a passion for me, and I hope I can bring something to the table that will benefit everyone, not include myself as well, because if I benefit, you benefit. So my interests are your interests, and I hope that I can be here to be a representation of you and let your voices be heard along with the council and mayor, like I said, in a logical, common sense approach as a team member on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. And finally, we'll hear from William Rudolph Hall.
Hey, everybody. I'm Will. I moved here in 2018. I've always grown up in New Windsor. I was actually a student at New Windsor Middle. I was an Eagle Scout from Troop 582. I even did my Eagle Scout project in New Windsor. When my wife and I moved here, we fell in love with the town just because of the historic nature. It's just, it's amazing having a house that's so old and have all that history to go with it. So when, when we moved in here, I knew I wanted to get back to the town. So what I did is I started going to meetings. I've been to almost every meeting since we moved in here and, and put in a lot of time, a lot of effort to make sure to get the word out to the, to the people, because a lot of people can't attend meetings late at night. So I, I developed a website where people can go on, get some notes of what happened on the meeting. That's really my goal here, is I want to, I want to connect the government to the people and really have everybody understand why the government does things, why they make decisions certain ways, and, and make a common sense approach to, to these big projects we have coming up. We have the Deelman Inn, we have Streetscape, we have, we have a lot of water projects that need to be done, and we need to really take a holistic look of it and, and really understand what every dollar is going to, and then get that disseminated out to everybody. So I'm here, I'm running for town council, and I look forward to answering some questions with everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, William. So we will, we'll now go to the question portion of the evening, and we're going to start with the first question's going to go to you, Austin, and we'll, we'll rotate in that manner. So, Austin, first, what motivated you to put your hat in the ring and run for New Windsor Town Council? And, you know, why do you want to serve in this role?
It's a great question, Bob. I said in my statement earlier before and on the presentation, I just, I live here now. I, I'm growing my family here. In 2013, like I said, we moved here. We really enjoy living here. Honestly, this is a little, I guess, scary for me to, to jump in like this. I was like, thinking to myself, I'm like, hey, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna raise my family here and invest my life here, it's important to me and, and the livelihood of myself, my family, my community here in New Windsor should take at least a part of my priority as far as growing my family here and then serving the community. I just thought that I could bring something to the table as far as a town council member that would hopefully just be someone who can listen to ideas with respect to everyone involved, like I said before, and then take those ideas and, and, and work on them. And if, like I said, if people have, you know, things that maybe I don't know, because there are a lot of things I don't know, but I'm willing to learn, to be able to bring informed responses in a timely manner to those people, that would be a great thing. So that's why I invested myself, and that's why I'm going to invest my time, because this is really kind of important to me, because I'm going to be living here with my family, and I want to serve the community in a way that's impactful in a positive way that will hopefully reach a lot of people's lives and make our town continue, you know, continuous, a, a place where people want to come and raise their own families, just because it's a great place to live, good community, good outreach, and I just think that's really important. So that's why I got involved, just to, to do those things. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Austin. William, you're next.
Hey, so the reason I started is, obviously, when I moved in, I wanted to get back to the community. And one of the ways is I was available to attend the meetings, so I was able to be there for, for the residents that couldn't. And one of the things that I've had the pleasure of, of doing is I've had many people call me, text me, everything. And there's one common theme is that they feel that the government, the local government, isn't listening to them, and there's a lot of big contentious items that came up in the past. There, there was the pay-as-you-thrown trash program, there's the water bills, there's, there's multiple things, and the one thing was is they felt that their voice wasn't heard. So that's why I started documenting everything, making sure that people knew exactly what the government was doing, why they were doing it, and then that way they can get their voice out as well. Because, like I said, there's people that can't attend meetings. It's not like you can expect them to come to the meeting and, and say what they want every, every month when they're trying to raise their children. So that's the one main thing, is I want to really connect the government to the residents and be able to be their voice.
Thank you, Will. Kevin?
Bob, the reason I'm running is because it's my civic responsibility. I was raised by two parents who taught me to be, to grow where I was planted. I've been planted here for a quarter of a century, and it's my responsibility. It's my civic responsibility to do it. I know that sounds like a canned speech, but anybody that knows me knows that I'm a dig-in kind of guy. I get in and do things. I know there's a lot of information out there specifically about the water, but what you'll find out about me is I'm not a one candidate, one, one issue candidate. I'm going to be here for the citizens of New Windsor. Why? Because I live here. I've lived on Guller Road at 1011 Guller Road for 20, 21 years, and at 1801 New Windsor Road for, for four years. The fact is, I know the details of the water issue. I know the details of the pay-as-you-go issue, and I'm prepared to be a town council person. That's not to say that somebody new with energy and excitement to come work for the town council should not be elected as well, but I'm prepared to start day one with being fully informed. I know there's a lot of misinformation, and that's frankly what it is. I know the story about the water, water situation. And there's not, there's no sinister plot put forth by the citizen or by the, the mayor of the town, nor is there a sinister plot by the town council. And when people say things like that, and if I'm a little worked up, it's because these are people that I know. They're good people, and I'm going to be one of those good people to help them carry it into the next future. I would, I had the benefit of working with one of the former, soon-to-be former town council members, and I told him I decided that I, when I took the water tour to see our water system, that day I knew something was calling me to stand up for the citizens of New Windsor, and that's exactly what I'm going to do on day one, like I've been doing on the planning commission for the last four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. For our next question, we'll start with William. So regardless of who wins, from two of you, New Windsor will have two new town council members. What steps will you take to be sure you're prepared to serve from the very first day? And how do you see yourself working with the mayor and the other members of council?
Well, that's a great question. I actually, I've been preparing for years. I'm actually one of the only ones that have been attending meetings. And I've always put an interest into the, the town budget, the town issues. By attending the meetings, I'm able to really see what the town's perspective is and what the residents' perspective is. And using both of those, I can, I can form a middle ground and really get the best of both worlds, where we can have two different opinions on one issue and really find what's best for the, the town residents. I've already made many connections within the council. I've, I plan to work with every council member, because really, if you just try to go in alone, you're not going to get anywhere. You got to work with everybody. You, everybody is going to have a difference of opinions, but that's really the key to government, is that you can take those different differences of opinions and then collaborate together and really pick one plan that helps all New Windsor residents.
Thank you, William. Kevin?
So, as I mentioned before, I'm on the planning commission, so I work closely with the town council as it is. I, I would differ with, in, in one thing and say that I also have been attending the meetings, and when I don't attend, it's because of work, travel, but I, I'm there because I actually review the meetings. I reviewed the last planning session meeting, you know, after the notes, and I review the notes and ask questions. The fact is, you know, preparedness comes in actually finding out the facts. And, and, you know, the interesting thing is that, you know, I know about the pay-as-you-go or pay-as-you-throw and the issues about water, but this water issue has been going on since, you know, the, the, since the early 2000s. I mean, we can't wait until the, until the, the, if the issues are implemented or the, the policies are implemented to raise us, think about it. You have to come to the meetings, and the meetings are at seven o'clock, and I know that may be late, but, you know, I'm of the mindset that when it's important to you, you go. And, and, you know, I have kids too. I'm, I'm a parent too. You know, my kids are older now, but, you know, I, I've been attending, I was attending meetings back when they were discussing the quarry and, you know, the, the issues and concerns about the quarry. So the fact is, again, I know these, I know the former mayors, I know the former planning commission people, I know the, the current town council people. The reality of it is, the only way that you get things done is to get involved. And frankly, that's what we need more of. I can't get people to join the Rec Council, and I need them, and we've got tons of parents to do that. But you need people to get in and do, and do things. The other thing, and I'm going to say real quickly, is in terms of getting along, I don't look at this, the, the town council as this big government thing. These are the citizens that live next door to me and next door to you, that you put your kids on the bus with. They're not this big government.
Thank you, Kevin. Austin?
Like I said before, I'm not really one for long speeches, so I'll keep it short. Honestly, my goal as a community that I live here with my neighbors and the community people is, as a town council member, my goal is to work as a team with the mayor and other members of the council and to be a liaison to you as my neighbors and community on certain issues that the, that the government, I guess, you know, might have, the town council might have, but to be able to give you informative, informative and knowledgeable information on those issues, so we don't go off like half-cocked with misinformation or not enough information, because information is the key. Wisdom is, you know, something that's, you get from knowledge. And if you have that knowledge, you can share that knowledge with other people to help them better understand issues. And if everyone understands it together, then we can work as a team, help solve those issues in an effective and logical manner, hopefully. That, that's my hope. I live here, so if I'm paying a higher water bill, or, or if I'm paying more for the cityscape, or if the COVID relief funds aren't being disseminated appropriately, then I suffer from that, like, like you guys do and the other council members, the mayor, other community members. We are all in this together. So we have to work as a team to solve the issues, and I just think that's, that's something I'm willing to do. I'm willing to sacrifice my time because it's something I believe in. Like I said, it's a little scary for me, because I haven't done this before, but I'm definitely one that is ready to jump in, to learn as much as I can, to work as a team, to gain that knowledge, to hopefully share that with everyone else that I live with, so we can move forward in a positive way and have, hopefully, continue this great town in, in, in a good way. So that's, that's what I would say to everyone. So thank you.
Thanks, Austin. This time, we'll start with you, Kevin. What do you, as a town council candidate and a resident of New Windsor, believe is the most critical issue that needs to be addressed? And what is your plan to resolve it while simultaneously continuing to maintain a balanced budget and adequate reserve funding for emergencies?
Community involvement. That's a big key. As I mentioned before, New Windsor is an old town. One that I'm really passionate about, and I apologize if my passion kind of seeps through my, my, my message, but the fact is, I care dearly about this place, and one of the biggest things is that we need to inform people that in the, in the near future, there will be spending that is required. We got to upgrade our water system. Our water system, when I say that, I mean the wastewater treatment set, uh, system, because there are government mandates that require us to have a certain level of wastewater treatment and how we, how we deal with our waste. It's not the, it's not the water we drink, it's the water we get rid of. And frankly, there are going to be some things that come up that are going to require us to take a look at, at a balanced approach at funding that. There'll be some public funding, and there'll be funding that we put, we save, but one thing that we cannot do, and I stress this to the nth degree, you cannot, you know, borrow from today, or, you know, borrow from today and kick the can down the road for the future, because it will come, and I don't want my grandkids to come to New Windsor and not be able to afford to live here, because people like, in my situation, made irresponsible decisions on the funding. Funding is very important, and we need to keep, we need to keep the process going in terms of saving for the future. That is very critical, but there will also be some great things that we can do. The new Streetscape idea is going to re, is going to require some funding from the town of New Windsor. We're going to have to put forth some money there, so we have to look at a balanced approach there, for fiscally balanced approach to how we do it. Do we borrow a lot of money and then, you know, have to pay for it down the road? Or do we spend some of the money that we put away for that? Those are the key issues, and I, you know, I, I can't stress the urgency of understanding that for the citizens of New Windsor.
Thank you, Kevin. Austin?
Yeah, I think dissemination of funds within the budget is, is very important for our town. We just have to do it in a way that is smart for the longevity of the town and ourselves, if that makes sense. So, um, like, you know, like he was saying, we can't, we can't borrow for today and expect to not suffer any consequences in the future. So we have to be smart financially as a town. We can do that, but we have to work as a team. We have to see what funds are appropriate at what times. But like I said, the longevity of the town in which we reside is very important. So we have to think of projects and ideas and infrastructure that is important now, that we have to, that we're going to have to give to and maybe make some sacrifices. We might have to make sacrifices. I have to make sacrifices right now, unfortunately, for the water bill, because it is high, but it's also important to have clean, good drinking water. I'm not saying that's great, but when we're able to, you know, reevaluate those prices, hopefully, me as a town council member can bring some, you know, ideas that would help improve those issues, whether it's the Deelman Inn, the Streetscape, the base water rates. I mean, the base water rates right now are $263 a quarter, whether you use any water or not, and it's $12.47 per thousand gallons after that. So I don't know if we can work on that to reduce those rates. I hope we can, because like I said, what benefits me benefits everyone else, because we're all in this community together. So as a town council member, I want to be able to bring those, those ideas, those common sense, you know, hopefully logical, team-oriented ideas to the rest of the council and the mayor, and hopefully serve the people in a way that would benefit us all together as a town for the longevity of the town itself. Thank you.
Thank you. William?
Hey, so the, the one thing that kind of concerned me about the, the last answers was that it was more of a, what we need to spend more on. And instead, I think what we need to do is we need to reevaluate what we're already spending things on. Now, the water issue is a big issue. The one thing that I have noticed is that we've been taking out loans for water issues, low-interest loans, but loans nonetheless, and we have a $2 million fund just for water repairs and upgrades, yet still is not being utilized. Now, the, the other issue here is, we have all these projects going on, but no clear picture going forward. We have the Deelman Inn, which has had so many funds, grants, everything thrown into it, but yet no clear picture, no future for it. We don't have a solid, here's what's going in there in two, three years down the road. Streetscape, Streetscape's been in the works for years, and yet we're still working on it. So one of the things that I'm looking forward to is, is not saying that we need to cut things, but saying that we can look at it in a different way. Now, with the water bills, we, we had the opportunity to freeze the water rates, not lower them, not, not reduce them where we couldn't do any repairs. We had the opportunity to freeze them during the pandemic, but the council chose not to. And that's the one thing that I, I think is a key issue. We need to really look at this pandemic, see what, see what it's done, because there's people that can't pay their water bill. And, and we really need to just reevaluate what we're currently spending things on and seeing how we can reduce but still fit, you know, still get everything done, still get clean water, still get the, the Streetscape, everything that we have.
Thank you. And you all are touching on things that we're going to come back to, for sure. First, though, another budget question, top of mind, and we're going to start again with Austin now. Is there anything in the budget that you would go into office believing could be substantially cut or would need to be substantially increased?
It's a great question, Bob. At this time, I don't think I possess the wisdom to really give a good, accurate information, uh, answer on that question, but I'm definitely going to be someone as a town council member who's going to be able to learn what's really important and, and what could be most beneficial for the town as far as that goes. And that's what all I would have to, to say on that, but, at, at right now, until I learn from everyone else and, and the team I'm working with, to give a good, accurate, informative response, that's, that's good for everyone.
Thank you. William?
So substantially is the, is the, the key word there. I, I don't think anything can be substantially increased or decreased. We're, we're in the middle of a pandemic. I don't think we're going to have that much of an increase of funds where we could substantially increase things, substantially decrease. We're already working on a tight budget. That's the problem. We, we do have a balanced budget. We, we're not the federal government. We can't just spend. We have to make sensible approaches, and, and one of the things is, I don't want to be Gary in a budget season, because that, that man does a lot of, a lot of changes, a lot of revisions, and, and I've been lucky enough to, to see the past couple budgets. And it's, it's a huge process. I've looked at every line myself. It's a pretty tight budget. What I, what I do think is I think that we can start planning out projects in the future better, so that we can budget them more accordingly. But as of the, the year-to-year budget, i- it's tight, and, and we would have to look at every line, but there's not much you can substantially cut.
Thank you, Will. Kevin?
I wouldn't, I don't think it's prudent for me to say, hey, yeah, I'd come in and cut anything. Frankly, I've seen the budgets for the last two cycles, and I'll say that it is a balanced budget. Will is absolutely correct about that. However, there are two budgets. There's not one. There's a budget for the water and wastewater treatment. It's called the Enterprise Fund, that is funded independently of our town budget. The town budget is a tight and solid, balanced budget. It has to be, just like you said. As far as cut or increase, well, there will be increases to the budget when we do projects like Streetscape. Um, as far as cut or increase, well, there will be increases to the budget when we do projects like streetscape. The streetscape budget has not, or the streetscape project has not been on the books because they don't want to do it. We have to find the funding that helps keep our balanced budget balanced. You know, the fact is you just have to, you know, when I hear things like, I've been at the meetings and I know, you know, we do have people who unfortunately cannot pay their bills. And I, I know what that's like. Uh, many of us may know what that's like. But we have the nicest town managers and, and accounting and financial people that work with people for a long time. They work with people. We're not kicking people out on the street. You know, you mentioned, uh, it was mentioned that, you know, we could have, uh, we could freeze the, the increase. That freeze of the increase would have been about $3.25. You know, it's, 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 I'm not saying that that's not important, but it's just, i- it, it doesn't really, it's not a, it's not a significant change to what we're trying to do. That's not going to make, uh, make or break whether somebody can pay their bill, especially when the town is working with people that can't pay their bills. We have a compassionate town and I'm going to be right there with them, reaching out to those people. I'll be compassionate, just like the rest of the people in the town are.
Thank you, Kevin. So let's, let's talk about some of the issues you all have brought up. Um, let's start with the, the streetscape project. It's been on hold. It's been talked about for a long time. What is the best course of action going forward in terms of funding and, and pulling it off, making, making this happen? How, how can it happen? And let's start with William on that in terms of streetscape. And should it happen?
It definitely should happen. Uh, the sidewalks are, are a mess. It's, I, I'm lucky enough where I'm not wheelchair bound, where I'd have to go down, uh, the streets and I, it's sad to see that, you know, people can't make it down those sidewalks. Now, I, I will say that the mayor has been working, uh, with the state to get funds. And, and it seems like it's been getting closer. Um, he has made a lot of progress. The, the, the one thing that I would say is I would, uh, uh, split it. Um, we've been splitting a lot of projects lately, uh, as most importantly, the, the main street project is, uh, is being split into phases. And that I think would have been the best approach for the streetscape. Um, instead of doing one large project, which I think is up to, uh, five or $6 million. Um, splitting that up where we can focus on the sidewalks at first and then, uh, work on the lights and, and the, uh, the extras to that. Um, because the Maryland, uh, I think gave us a, they offered $3 million out of the 5.8. Um, so if, if we could split the project up into two smaller projects where we focus on the sidewalks first. And then that way we can get grant money and then maybe a year down the line, put the lights in and the rest. Um, I think that will get a quicker response and we'll probably have an easier time getting a, uh, $3 million grant versus a $6 million grant.
Thank you, Will. Kevin?
So, um, as far as, you know, um, the streetscape program, I, I know that the, I know that the current town council is in favor of it. And when we get the appropriate funding for it, it will happen. Um, if you look at, um, you know, College Avenue, what they did there made that, you know, brightened up the community. And I absolutely love it. And that's what, that's pretty much what's geared for, uh, Main Street. And eventually I hope it happens. Um, we've got to do it in a fiscal way though. Um, the other thing too is, you know, um, the way government works, uh, uh, what I do in, uh, you know, in my real job during the day is I, I have a, I have a budget for four offices around the country. And, and frankly, my one office here in Maryland is about the equivalent budget as, as what we have in New Windsor. But when you get public funds that are gr, and grants, like it was for the Dillman, when they painted the Dillman was a grant, never came out of the tax ba, uh, taxpayer pockets. Um, when you get those funds, you have to put those funds towards certain things. You can't say, okay, we'll take a little bit here and use this for there. I know that that's what the perception is. When we have saved money, it is for things that we know. We're about to put a pumping station. There's a plan to put a pumping station on 31 right across from the Brother and Center Conference, uh, or not Conference Center, but Warehouse. That, that pump station is going to be a chunk of money. You got to have money saved up. If a pipe breaks, like they do in Baltimore, because it's 100 years or plus, you got to pay for somebody to get it, to fix it, and it's not cheap. So you just can't dole out money to, you know, for short-term gain. That's just simply not how you do it. When you, when you gain the wisdom of balancing budgets like I have, you realize you just can't throw money to make people feel better about their current situation. When the reality of it is, we're going to live hopefully for hundreds of years here.
Thank you, Kevin. Austin?
I think, uh, you know, in our town, infrastructure is a, a big, uh, and very important thing. Um, you know, what it deals with, if it's the, the sewer lines, the sidewalks. Um, I know from my house, uh, where I draw chalk with my children, um, the sidewalks are all broken up. Um, so they're in pretty poor shape. Um, so I, I, you know, that's, that's some things that we need to, to work on as a town to make it more appealing in nature to visitors. Uh, but also especially for ourselves who, the people that live here, and we invest our time here. We walk our dogs on the sidewalks, you know, we walk our kids on the sidewalks. That, that sounds weird, but I walk my kids down the sidewalk, um, to the bus stop. So just making sure those sidewalks are in good working, you know, condition is important, not only, you know, for the safety. Um, you know, of our town, our families, our children, but also it looks good. You want to have a town that looks neat and presentable and the, and the streetscape. Uh, if we're working along with partners of the government, we need to make sure that we improve those things uh, in, in appropriate way so that benefits, uh, us as a town. But also the people that come to visit our town, because who's going to want to visit a town that has like, you know, crappy sidewalks and, and the sewer lines are bad and, and other things of nature. So the cityscape, uh, projects that we have in the town, I may not have a ton of wisdom in them, but I'm sure going to learn. Um, it's just really important for us, uh, to make sure we maintain and upkeep them in an appropriate way, um, for the town itself. Uh, so I think that's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we're going to be back around to Kevin this time. Uh, we've mentioned the Dillman Inn already. Progress is being made on it. I think a $350,000 grant-funded foundation stabilization project is starting soon. Um, what is your vision for the future of this property? And do you expect it to continue to be owned by New Windsor long-term? And again, we'll start with Kevin.
Okay, well, I, I really don't know. I mean, um, we've, you know, it's been for sale. Um, I'm, I would love for someone to come in and help maintain its historic, uh, appearance and connection to the town. Um, I don't know. I'm, I, I have a strong belief that someone will do it. If they do, I hope there are, I hope their business, ideally, I'd like to see businesses inside of there that help accentuate the greatness of New Windsor. Uh, it would be wonderful if we could see shops in there. Um, but I don't know. I don't know. I can't predict, uh, you know, that there'll be somebody there. But, um, I think it's a great, um, I think it's at a great location. It's at the heart of our town. Um, you know, I, I certainly think that, um, you know, there could be people. I know there was some interest that in there, but I, I simply don't know, uh, whether, you know, someone will come in and buy it or not.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, Austin?
Well, you know, Louis Dillman bought in in 1864. And it was run by the Dillman family until 1927. In 2011, the New Windsor Town Council voted to purchase the property. I don't know if everyone's known that, but we have. In 2016, we went through the lead paint, um, you know, project to get it, I guess, restored on the outside. Uh, you know, there's 43 rooms in that thing. We were awarded $350,000 from the state to revitalization of, of that inn itself. Um, so we got to figure out as a town council, how we're going to do that? What is it going to look like? Um, you know, is it going to be something that we want to own as a town that would be profitable? Whether we rent it out to certain businesses that would benefit the town, uh, in the longevity of the town? Or is that something we're going to fix up, you know, and spend money on and maybe flip it to sell that to make a profit? I don't think so, because it's part of our town. It's like, it's a landmark in this New Windsor town. So, you know, for me, if it's, has historical value, I kind of want to keep that in the family, if that makes sense. If it's possible, if it makes financial sense, because you don't want to just give away something that has, you know, historic sentimental value to everyone that's lived here for a lot longer than my family and I have. So I want to be a part of a team that can figure out what's the best course of action for this. You know, maybe it's a, uh, you know, maybe it's Airbnb, maybe it's a coffee shop. Maybe it's small businesses that could come in and utilize that space appropriately. That would benefit the town, um, and provide substantial, well, maybe not substantial, but at least some type of income. Um, over time, that's, that's dependable, that we can use and, and, and count on in a sense, um, to get that job done. But it's going to take teamwork, it's going to take planning, and it's going to take wisdom in what kind of businesses we want to bring to New Windsor.
Thank you, Austin. William?
Hey, so, so the Dillman Inn, it, like everybody said, it, it's, it's a part of New Windsor history, just like the Atlee Ridge House. Um, it, it's, it's history. It's, it should stay a historic, uh, of historic nature. Now, the one thing that, um, I do want to see is I want to see the end goal. I want to see what, what our plan is. Um, if it is shops, what kind of shops? Where is the parking going to be? That, that's going to be a big issue because we could, we could plan like, uh, like one of the ideas that came up was a coffee shop. That's great, but if there's no parking, who's going to go to the car, the coffee shop? So we really need to start thinking what the end goal is so that we can plan towards that. One, one of the things that this $350,000 grant was for, it's for the foundation. It's for to make sure that the, the building doesn't collapse. Now, the, the interior still needs to be designed, uh, redone. So that's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars as well. So, I mean, we have, we, we put the, the, the payment to buy it. We have the lead, uh, abatement. We have, uh, the foundation. We need to do the interior still. Um, and then that, you know, at that point, we could still need, we could need a new roof at that point. It's, it's getting old. Um, so really what we need to do is we need to figure out what our end goal is. If there is shops, uh, if we can lease them out to, to, to the shops. Um, and in that way, that's a source of income for the town. Um, and, and we can also, we, we just need to know what we're designing so that we can have that end goal of, here's what we need to do in the next five years to get to that goal. And that's, that's the main thing there.
Thank you very much. Okay, this time we're going to start with Austin for this question. Uh, New Windsor is due to receive close to 1.2 million in coronavirus relief funding. What would you favor doing with this money?
Bob, that's a great question. Um, it's a good question for me. It's a good question for my New Windsor community and my Felton neighbors. If, uh, you were to give us 1.2 million and be like, hey, use this 1.2 million however you want. Um, I, I think that's something that has to be very carefully evaluated on how we use those funds and in what areas we use them. Um, you know, blow it all in one area, then another area suffers. Um, so if you can figure out a way to, um, like use those resources the mo, in the most effective, reasonable, common sense manner, I think that's great. Um, it could be, you know, towards the, you know, whatever projects we have. However, it's very important to understand what's the most important projects to have done to put those on towards for the longevity and benefit of the town itself, to include us as a community. So I plan on being a council member that would be able to work. Like I say, I always say team, it's team and everything. The citizens are a team, my neighbors, the town council, the mayor, it's all team effort. So we got to work together to figure out, like I said, what's the best way to use those resources. Uh, you can't go off hot, you know, half-cocked and be like, yeah, spend, 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 you know, take this down, take this down. Oh, we don't want to pay anything. We want to pay a hundred bucks, uh, you know, a quarter for the water. Well, that's great, but if you, you know, risk the infrastructure of the town or you don't put the resources to use in an effective, logical way, then you could blow everything and then still be in, in, in bad shape itself. So I plan on being a council member who's works with the mayor and other council members, uh, in a way that we can figure out what is best for the town itself, the people that live here. Hopefully for them, from their input, because we value the input of everyone that lives here. Um, because we're all together in this and to figure out where those funds should be spent. And I think that's important to understand before we, you know, we spend those funds.
Thank you. William?
So, uh, one thing I would say is, uh, don't, don't expect the money until it's in writing. Um, so one of the things that we've, we've, uh, been on the receiving end for in town is, uh, we've had grants pulled. Um, we've had money that was promised to us pulled in, in the past. We've had, uh, when we did the big water projects up in 2008, uh, one of the, one of the things was is they said they were going to take care of, we had a gentleman's agreement that they were going to take care of, uh, of us. Uh, don't worry about having to spend all that, uh, money. And then on the last minute, that fund got pulled. Uh, it was never in writing. Um, and we actually had to take out some pretty hefty loans to pay for the, the mandated upgrades. Now, uh, and that happened as well with the streetscape. I mean, like I said, this thing's been working for years. Uh, for years, we've been told by the state that we're going to get funds. And yet here we are, 2021, and still don't have funds. So really, it, it really depends on what, uh, we get in writing and what the requirements are. Because like Kevin brought up earlier, the, one of the main things is the, a lot of these funds come with strings attached to them. You can't spend them for certain things. They might say you can only spend it for, uh, coronavirus relief, say like, uh, uh, telephone equipment, uh, uh, video equipment for the town hall. Um, now that's going to factor in if we can use it for that, or if we could use it for other things like, say, the sidewalk or, or parks to, to get people out in parks. Um, so really it depends on what the funds are. We have plenty of projects that it could go to, but it really all depends on what the, what the money's attached to and what we can and can't use it for.
Thank you. Kevin?
Both excellent points by my fellow candidates. Um, you absolutely cannot use that money to pay off debt. You can't do that. It's got to be, it's a government appropriation to, uh, increase, increase business. Um, you know, it's a stimulus. So you got to do, you got to find a way to fit it into the stimulus package. Um, you know, so, um, my vision would be, uh, our portion of the streetscape, uh, responsibility would be roughly a million dollars plus to do that. So if we had the money to do that, if we were able to, uh, upgrade the streets of New Windsor, which I do agree need, need upgrading, um, and that million dollars is available to do that. There you go. That's, that's the first thing to do. Uh, but I would also say we just need to sit and see if, if that money is a, allowed to be appropriated for other projects. Um, or, or certain projects, we'll, we'll take a look at that. And we'll, you know, we'll do what's best for New Windsor. The great thing about New Windsor is that the mayor lives here, the town council lives here. All the people that work in the government live here. So, you know, whatever you do in this town to better the water treatment plant, I get directly, you directly get the benefit of it. And, um, you know, so that, that's the great thing. Uh, but, you know, we'll, we'll take a hard look at what we need to do. Um, but we certainly have to follow the guidelines of the government, uh, when it comes, you know, if it comes. And to Will's point, that's excellent point. You, you just, you know, um, I, you know, I don't count your chickens before they hatch, you know? Um, so, you know, when we get the money, once it's, you know, in the bank and the check is cleared, we'll, we'll go from there. But I, I guarantee you this, if I'm on the board, it'll be fiscally responsible. Um, that's just how I operate. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, let's start with you, William. As a town council, are there things that can be done to help bring business to New Windsor? How can, how can New Windsor get some more business?
Certainly, I mean, we, we're constrained by, you know, physical barriers. We, we only have so much space. Um, so, so really it's, it's what can we do with the space that we have, uh, to, to bring business in? And, and one of the things that I, I've, I've, uh, reached out to Frankie's when they open. Um, talk to them, see, see what we could do to help them. Um, basically it, it's just, we need more business here. We need, um, any type of business. The Dillman Inn is a perfect example for that. That, that was a business. It was a, uh, um, a hotel of sorts. And, and if we could get, it's a lot of square footage. If we could get some businesses in there, you get two, three shops in there. Um, we have different properties around town that, that would really benefit by, uh, having a business in there. I'm, I'm sure every resident would agree. They love to see closer businesses where they could, uh, everybody would shop at them. And it's unfortunate that we don't really have much. Um, now, we, we have great restaurants. We, you could see they're packed almost every day. Um, so the businesses we do have, we also need to look at them and, and make sure that they, uh, that they're here and that, that their, their word, uh, matters as well. Um, so that they don't close up shop. I mean, we, we have, uh, one of the best dentists here. Uh, it's, it's really- It's, it's really, that's the key of this small town is you could, everybody knows everybody. And, and having those small businesses that you can, you can rely on, knowing that, you know, you're, you're getting a product, but you're also giving back to your community at the same time. We, we just need, um, we definitely need more businesses. We need to keep the businesses we have. Nice.
Thank you. Kevin?
So I've been thinking about this for the last twenty years or so because there were, there was a time that I was thinking, man, I wish we could, you know, be nice if we had a coffee shop. You know, um, one of the challenges that we face is even though thirty-one, um, as it comes through the town, i- is a pretty big fair, fur- thoroughfare. It's really challenging. I mean, my, my vision, um, if anybody's visited, you know, um, our neighboring towns like, um, like Sykesville and Mount Airy. I love the, the streetscapes that they have there. It's beautiful. And I would love that for New Windsor. But you have to have businesses that feel that it's viable to come here, you know? Um, I think the taxes, you know, the one of the reasons I love living here, and frankly, it's financially, the taxes are, are excellent. You know, if you, I, I, you know, I have relatives that live in other states that have, that have houses comparable to mine and they pay four times what we pay in tax. So, um, you know, it's a, it's a balance. You have to make sure that it's, uh, fi- fiscally respa- this, fiscally beneficial for the businesses that come here. But then you have to have the place for them to, for those businesses to take place. You know, um, I, I can't speak for, you know, future business owners, but we've, we've actually seen an uptick. Uncle Matty's has been great on that corner. I mean, you know, and Frankie's, I, I've driven by there, the parking lot's always full there. We have a liquor store that's doing well. When the barbecue place is open, the line is out the door. We have a lot of great things. We have a great couple mechanics in town. I use one of them. Like, uh, like Will mentioned, I, I, I use the dentist here. You know, we have places, um, I don't know. There would probably need to be some changes to fit those businesses in there. Like if we got a Dunkin' Donuts, where would you put the Dunkin' Donuts? We'd have to do some thinking there. But certainly, we want to make sure that we're not increasing taxes to a, a considerable amount. And we're, 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 you know, keeping taxes at a good level so people be attract, will be attracted.
Thank you. Austin?
Let me tell you something that attracts businesses to towns: charm. That's the one big thing. And I think New Windsor has a certain degree of charm. And do I think we could improve on that? Yes. But small towns offer high quality of life and a strong sense of worth to every resident in the community. But it's a place, you know, you were normally with a small population, uh, relatively speaking. You know, so we have a hard time sometimes supporting the broad range of goods and services. And there's economic challenges, uh, magnified in small towns because they don't have the infrastructure or maybe the tax revenue or the population to support those. So what we need to do to bring businesses in here is to maintain that charm, that appeal, um, whether it's reaching out to local newspapers, to, um, you know, to advertise our town and to make it look as appealing as possible to businesses. But, you know, but that's important. It's important to have a, a, the charm of the town to invigorate investors, business owners, establishments to come here and to know that if they bring their businesses here, that their businesses are going to be supported and, um, people are going to spend money there. You know, let's, let's just break it to everyone, you know, all my community members. People want money. So if they're going to bring a business here, they want to make sure that the town and the community that surrounds it, um, and other communities support it. So we have good businesses here. Uh, we want people from Westminster to come here for our businesses. We want people from Frederick County to come here and say, oh my gosh, hey, New Windsor is a great town, has a lot of charm to it. Let's go there. It's a, you know, their, their sidewalks are nice and amazing looking. You know, they're, they're buildings, the exterior finished. So we need to focus on that, the charm, the importance of, of those types of things to bring businesses here and then have businesses that are willing to stay and support us in those areas.
Thank you. Now this time we'll start with Kevin. So thinking about your background, considering your day job, what set of skills do you have that will translate very well to a position on the town council and, and help you, you know, once you have been elected?
Sure. As, as I mentioned earlier, um, I manage a distributorship for a manufacturer. I have offices in Maryland that cover the Mid-Atlantic. Offices in the Midwest and Indiana, Minnesota and Chicago. And, uh, I feel like I'm, you know, fiscally, I'm, I'm totally aware of what, what goes on in balancing budgets. I review contracts and, and put them out for ex- assign them for execution. I manage a group of about thirty-five people. You know, I, I'm a, I know that I'm a great leader because, you know, I retain people. I have very little turnover in, in, in my group. And, and I think that means that you just work well with people. I am very passionate and people know that about me. They know that, um, my, my desire is do, to do what's right for the business and the position that I hold, but also to do what's right for the people that, that work for me. And, and I look at that, how that translates into this position, you know, of town council, is that I care about the people in New Windsor. Uh, many of these people are my good friends, our children have grown up together. They're graduating high school and college together. I care about those people, sometimes more than myself. And, and you know, um, I just, you know, in other words, I put, I put people before myself just because that's the kind of person I am. I am, um, you know, I just, uh, I, I'm one that, you know, likes to understand the details and I pick the details up pretty quickly. But I, and I do like to listen. You know, one of my slogans is re- ready to listen, ready to serve. And that's frankly what I'll do. I'll listen to everything. And, and I'm, I'm a positive person. I've been passionate tonight because it, it means so much to me that we get leadership that understands the importance of balanced budgets in this town. So that's, that's the story. That's why I think I'm ready for this position.
Thank you. Austin?
I'm someone who would bring to town councils, a town council member, an area of pride. Pride for my town and the residents in which I represent, um, and the community that I live in. Respect for everyone involved, the mayor, town council members, my neighbors, the community. And someone who serves with integrity, um, and excellence and dedication to this town as a whole. And I think that's something I bring and I will bring as town council member to the council, to the town, is someone who does work and listens to people. What I do, I, I guess I could cer- consider myself a, uh, a customer service expert with what I do at work. And it, it's, sometimes it's very humbling to serve the community in which I, I serve, you know, now, but also here in New Windsor. So sometimes you have to humble yourself and not let that pride get in the way of your personal emotions and really listen to people. I think sometimes if you take the opportunity to listen to people, to listen to people and their backgrounds and their stories and get input, um, and then you're willing to, you know, act in a way that's sensible. I, I'm not going to be able to give everyone what they want. That's just not going to happen. That's not how it operates. You know, but we have to be willing to listen to people and hopefully come to common grounds in a way that's sensible, that would benefit everyone, to include myself. Because like I said before, we all live here together. We all have a piece of this pie that we have to eat. So if we're not all willing to work together to do that, um, it's just not very beneficial for everyone. So as a town council member, I'm something I'm going to bring, just someone of a sound mind, hopefully, common sense. My business, you know, knowledge might not be as much as some people, but I'm definitely a quick learner. And I'm, I'm passionate about this community because I live here and I, and I raise my family here, along with all of you. And that's important.
Thank you. William?
Hey, so you mentioned, uh, a day job. I'm actually a computer engineer for the federal government. So I, I solve complex, uh, algorithms and things like that. So, um, although it's not business per se, using those skills of, of taking a difficult problem and finding a solution is, is key to any kind of, uh, government. Now, uh, my values in, in, as an Eagle Scout, you always want to serve the community. So when I moved here, the first day, I, I decided that I was going to be involved in the town. And knowing that, you know, my strong suit is computers. That's why I really keyed on, on making sure that I had a, uh, online outreach to a lot of the residents. And, and that, that was a great program because I had so many people call me, email me. And, and that's really the key, uh, that I think to the council is to just have somebody that you can call, text, uh, email, day and night, where you, as a resident, can feel that you can reach out to, say your opinion, figure out and be involved as well to, to solve those complex issues. We have plenty of complex issues in this town. I, I think, I think what, uh, some of the other members here have, uh, said is, is really key. We need to get the community involved. So, taking my strong suits and computers, I, I decided to bring that in and, uh, really outreach to the, to the, to the residents. And I think that's going to be key going forward is making sure that that outreach to, to all the residents and really bringing people in, uh, to, to state their opinions as well will really benefit the town as a whole.
Thank you, William. And, and thank you all. It's been a very informative night. Let's ask one more question and then we'll go to closing statements. So we're going to start with you, Austin. Just if you could, if you're elected, what will your top three priorities be for New Windsor over the next four years?
Pretty top priorities for New Windsor in the next four years? That's a great question. Great question. Financial responsibility would be a big one. Allocation of those resources and those finances would be another one. Community engagement, getting people involved would be my third one. Because as a community, that's right there is the key, right there, community. We have to be able to communicate as a community effectively to help figure out the issues that we want to solve. Like I said, it seems like there's, people are, are a lot of financial issues people are wondering about. Well, me as a town council member will be able to figure out what those issues are, hopefully, and be able to give information because information is key to help people understand. A lot of times people get, uh, upset about things, uh, whether it's personal, job-related things, if they don't really understand what's going on. So if you have a, a good picture and understanding of those things, then it helps bring clarity. It helps bring, I guess, a sense of calmness, be like, oh, hey, why is the water bill this high? Oh, it's, it's this high because this, this and this. But we're working on this, this and this to solve the issue. I don't have all the answers right now. I, I don't. But I'm telling you, I will find the answers and I'll make sure I give you knowledgeable and timely responses as a town council member for those things. So, again, the three things over the next four years, financial responsibility, allocation of those finances, and then community outreach. Bringing the community together to prosper in a way that's beneficial for the town, myself, my neighbors, my community, because I can't do this without you. And unfortunately, you can't do it without me either. We need to work as a team. So hopefully we can come to common grounds to do that. But over the next four years, hey, the world's the limit. I think we can, can, can do a lot in four years if we work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. William?
Hey, so number one is, is community outreach. I mean, the, the main thing is, is making sure that the residents understand what's being, decisions are being made, why they're being made and facts to go along with it. One of the things about that is, is we, we always need to make sure that the, um, community is informed, has all the information they can. Like, like Kevin brought up earlier, nobody's, you know, pocketing thousands of dollars. Nobody, nobody here is getting rich off of working for the government. The perception of that is, is just, i- it's wrong. And, and, and that's what needs to be fixed. There's a study we need to, we need to, uh, focus on for the water rates. So we had a study about five years ago. Th- that study suggested that we do rate increases, um, yearly for five years and that's coming up at the end. Now, we just had the pandemic. How does that affect things? Wh- what does that change in our future? So really, uh, that comes to the second point of really planning for the future, is, is rethinking things, making sure that we have our ten-year plan, uh, in our minds while we're working on our current budget so that we really see what we want to do in the future to, um, because that'll affect what, what we budget now. And, uh, third thing is, is just working with the council, um, to, to just bring a collaborative mindset and, and really take differences of, of opinions throughout the town and, uh, combine them into one so that we all can work on one solution that benefits the entire town.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. I don't, I don't know that I have in, um, a specific order, but I'll say that, you know, I'm going to be fiscally responsible. I'm going to be fully committed, uh, to smart growth and town initiatives through fiscal responsibility. That's going to be probably my first thing. I will promote the beautification of the town through initiatives that are designed to uplift and mo- uh, modernize New Windsor. And, um, this is a big thing for me because I'm a coach at heart. I will investigate and propose family-centric activities designed to promote community pride you, and youth involvement. And further, I will support and help, uh, to enhance the current community activity. I'm going to say that, you know, when I moved to the town, we had some, we had a town festival at the International, uh, Center and, um, the Bre- and, and Brethren, Brethren International Center. And it was great. We had all the community or all the community businesses, uh, participated in, and it was wonderful. And we have something like that now every October and we're going to have it this year. And I'm looking forward to it because it was on hiatus, uh, last year. But we have, uh, music on the main. I'm going to promote things like that. I'm actually, uh, my wife and I, along with others of my neighbors, that hopefully they're listening, you know, we, we put, uh, put together block parties where we actually, for a couple of years straight, we put, we closed off the blocks, we got the approval of the town, and we had a town block party for the Blue Ridge Manor. I'm looking to see that happen in every, uh, one of our communities so that it can bring people outdoors again. People don't like to go, it's like, like we're, we're all, you know, and, and I know it's attributed to COVID, but, you know, we got to get back out and into the community and I'd like to see that happen. Another thing I'd like to see people do is form their own neighborhood community, uh, community organizations where not HOAs to put rules on people, but more, hey, nominate a t- a, a block captain to talk about, hey, what things do we want to do? It works. Uh, my wife and I did that in the past and I think it can be done again.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks again to each of the candidates. We'll now have a two minutes for a summary closing statement. Each candidate will have two minutes and we'll start with you this time, William.
Hey, so again, my name's Will. Just really looking forward to working with everybody in the town, uh, to, to make this town better for everybody. We have plenty of projects like we mentioned, uh, during this, uh, hour that we have, uh, water projects coming up. We have, uh, streetscape. We have a lot of huge projects that could really benefit the town and bring those small businesses that we need in and keep the ones that we have. So really, i- it's, it's taking a sensible approach to how we're going to, to increase this town, town businesses, town residents, to really bring it into the future where you have somewhere where you, you're raising your kids, sitting there thinking, wow, it's going to be the best town. You're, you're not going to want to move out of here. I feel that it is that way now, but we could always improve. So one of the things that I really do look forward to is, is working with, uh, the mayor and council, really taking that holistic view of let's take each project, see what our end goal is, and then start working back from there. And, and really getting the residents, getting them documents, getting them everything so that they have all the information that they, they can have so they can't come back and say, oh, well, you know, this person's stealing money. It's not true. We have, we have people that work hard, um, for, for, for very little money. And, and the fact of the matter is, we're all here to do one thing. We're, we're here to better the town. So I, I look forward to working with whoever, um, whoever is elected to be able to better this town.
Thank you, William. Kevin?
I'm going to start by thanking my fellow candidates, uh, for coming out. Again, I am a big proponent of involvement and, uh, to have these, uh, two young men, uh, come in and, and step into the process is uplifting for me. Whether win or lose, I find that this, you know, this experience has been great. And, uh, you know, I'm just thankful for the people that I've met along the way. I'm, I'm just going to summarize by saying twenty-five years ago, my wife and I discovered the charm of New Windsor and we enjoyed the quality of life that many of us hoped for. It was, um, through our involvement in the community, however big or small. Um, it was, um, through our involvement in the community, however big or small, that created that quality of life that we both enjoyed. Uh, we helped neighbors um in need and we reciprocated kind gestures when they sent uh goodwill to us. I believe that we can return to a positive sense of community, but there has to be and there must be a serious effort um of committing to public and, and, and community involvement. On May eleventh, I'm going to ask the people of town, of the town of New Windsor to entrust in me uh to take us into the next, uh, the next decade. And um, I'm, I'm asking that in, you know, and uh with honor actually, because I know that, you know, it's a big responsibility and I, I look at it that way. I'll be truthful to the community as I will be truthful to myself. So, um, I just thank uh everybody for this opportunity uh, opportunity tonight, and uh I look forward to serving the people of New Windsor.
Thank you, Kevin. And Austin, you've got the final word.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate it. Again, my name is Austin. I'd just like to thank uh you for tonight and, and all the, the things you're asking us question-wise. We can't get our message out without you. I'd like to fell, you know, thank my fellow candidates. Um, I plan on being a council member to be a voice of the people and also the council, to mediate um both parties in a way that's effective and meaningful. Um, I, I guess brings, brings a, a sense of teamwork to the atmosphere. Like I said, it, it's a town. A town is a community. A community is a group of people that come together to build something to last a lifetime. And that's what we're doing here. We're building, we're, we're sustaining a town, hopefully, that I'm going to pass on to my kids, that like you're going to pass on to your kids, that other members have passed on to their kids. I want it to be a place where my kids will choose, hey, hey dad, you know what, you know, when I'm done, uh, you know, I want to live here. I want to live in New Windsor. I love New Windsor, the town, the community, the place we grew up. It's a great place to live. So as a town council member, that's what I'm going to invest, my personal, um, hopefully, the wisdom that I can, can gain from other council members, from the mayor, from you as the community, my neighbors, to really hear and understand what's important to everyone here in the community. But then just not hear it, but implement it in a way that makes, that, that, that makes sense to everyone, hopefully. And like I said before, we're not going to agree on everything. We're not going to like everything. Sometimes sacrifices have to be made so we can benefit in the future. You know, I started eating peanut butter and jelly and had no ham or lunch meat. And then I got a better job. I was like, oh, I get lunch meat and ham. This is a great. I had to sacrifice by eating white bread and peanut butter and jelly. But as a town council member, I'm going to bring, be someone who's going to be dedicated to everyone here and, and the town and the community in which I live and I love. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll turn it back over to Teresa.
Thanks, Bob. So we would like to thank all the candidates who are with us this evening, as well as our moderator, Mr. Bob Bluewall from the Carroll County Times. A special thanks to everyone who submitted questions for tonight's forum. This forum has been recorded and will be available for on-demand viewing on our website at carolmediacenter.org and on YouTube. It will also be rebroadcast on cable channel HD ten eighty-six and channel nineteen until election day. The first rebroadcast will be on cable channel HD ten eighty-six on Wednesday, April twenty-eighth and Friday, April thirtieth at twelve noon, and on Saturday, May first at six P M. Before we go, I'd like to encourage everyone to learn about the candidates running in the twenty twenty-one municipal elections by visiting the CMC's online voter's guide at carolmediacenter.org. Thank you all for joining us and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.